We all sat, Madam Clerk. Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The hour is seven o'clock, and as Mayor, I hereby call to order the meeting of Laconia City Councils scheduled for this hour on August 27, 2018. We'll begin our meeting tonight with a salute to the American flag. I would ask that you please rise and join Counselor Henry Lippman reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For the record, the minutes to tonight's meeting are being kept by City Clerk Cheryl Hebert, and I would ask that she please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Here.
Counselor Bowens?
Counselor Bowens is absent this evening.
Counselor Lippman?
Here.
Counselor Haynes?
Here.
Counselor Hamel?
Counselor Hamel is absent this evening.
Counselor Hosmer?
Present.
Mayor Engle?
Here. So let the record show that four of the six counselors are present at the beginning of tonight's meeting, and a quorum for this meeting has been established. Also note for the record that the council is joined tonight at the front table by City Manager Scott Myers and by the City Finance Officer Donna Woodham. First order of regular business is approval of minutes. You have before you tonight the minutes from... Obviously, these are not the minutes of August 27th. These are the minutes of August 13th.
Correct.
Yeah, it says 27 on the sheet here. So we're talking about the minutes of August 13th. Those were distributed to the council on August 16th. I believe there was one correction submitted to the clerk, and the minutes before us tonight include that one correction. So if there are no further corrections to be suggested at this point in time, I'm going to declare that the minutes to our meeting of October 13, 2018 are submitted, are approved, I'm sorry, as submitted and amended by the city clerk. We have one consent and action item, which is on page 14 of your packet tonight, and that has to do with the Laconia High School Homecoming Parade, which is scheduled for Friday, September 21. A motion would be in order to approve temporary traffic order 2018-14, Laconia Homecoming Parade to be held on September 21, 2018, from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. Someone make that motion. Counselor Haynes makes the motion. Counselor Lippman seconds that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the parade permit, please raise a hand. Thank you. We have four votes in the affirmative, and that motion carries unanimously. Okay, next up is citizen comments for matters not on tonight's agenda. This is the appropriate place on the agenda tonight for anyone who is in our audience who would like to address the council on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda. Non-agenda items only at this point in time. Anyone qualify for that? No? Okay, nominations and elections. Page 16 of your packet, we have before us tonight a request to appoint Bree Henderson as a selectman for Ward 4. I believe this is a... Yes. Are you still the moderator? Counselor Haynes is the moderator, and so he is recommending that Bree Henderson be appointed to a selectman position for a six-year term, which would expire in 2024. Do I have the highlights there?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So let me ask a procedural question here, I guess, of the clerk. That is, what... I was confused by reading this as to what the council's role in this is.
Because they don't have one right now, so the moderator can bring to the council to elect one. For you to vote on one.
So if... So those, so selectmen always require council approval?
No, they would be put on a ballot.
Oh.
But it's too late at that point.
All right.
At this point.
I got you. I was just confused as to why we were doing this. All right, so Counselor Haynes moves to approve Bree Henderson as selectman for Ward 4 for a six-year term expiring at the end of September 2024. Counselor Lippman seconds that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor of that appointment, please raise a hand. Four votes in the affirmative. That motion carries unanimously. Next up, Roland Mayhew, who interviewed with us at the last meeting. He is seeking reappointment to a regular position on the zoning board of adjustment for another three-year term expiring at the end of August 2021. A motion would be in order to reappoint Roland Mayhew to be a regular member of the zoning board of adjustment for a three-year term expiring at the end of August 2021. Someone care to make that motion? Thank you. Counselor Hosmer makes that motion. Counselor Lippman seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor of the appointment of Roland Mayhew, please raise a hand. Four votes in the affirmative, and that motion carries unanimously as well. Okay, no presentations tonight, so we are to the mayor's report. And I wanted to take a couple of minutes tonight to report on the financial status of the Laconia Municipal Airport. As you know, the... I've had the privilege of being the chair of the airport authority for the last five years, and it's statutorily required by New Hampshire law that the mayor be the chairman of that. It's not because I have any particular... In fact, it's in lieu of the absence of any expertise in the aviation field. But we had our fiscal year, as the cities did, closed on June 30th, so I can give you some numbers tonight, and they're good numbers, I think. I think the hot, I think most people would concede that the airport is in better financial shape than it has ever been before. And so we're... I'll give you some numbers here, and probably it would be possible for you to ask some questions that I won't be able to answer, but I can get the answers for you if they're not at the tip of my tongue. So at the... Just hit some highlights here. For the fiscal year concluded on June 30th of this year, the airport's operating income was $352,000 rounded off. And so where does that money come from? Two-thirds of it roughly comes from land leases, the leasing of airport property. We have approximately 15 land leases in effect at this point in time at the airport, and the going rate is about $7,000 an acre per year for land, so depending on how much land you lease. And then we also lease out to the two fixed base operators, portions of the terminal building itself, in addition to the land leases. So you add all that up, and it comes to $252,000 a year in income to the airport from leasing. And then the other significant income block for the airport is user fees, and those are primarily two. Most importantly, we have a fuel flowage fee, which in effect is a tax on the fuel that's sold at the airport by the two fixed base operators. And last year, that brought in just under $55,000 in fuel tax. And then we also tax, both of the fixed base operators are affiliated with major car rental companies, and we also tax those for income. And that car rental tax brought in another $15,000. So that's, those are the major sources of income, operating income for the airport. So $351,000 of income. We have just one employee, Marv Iverson, the manager of the airport. And our operating expenses for this past fiscal year added up to $277,000. So we had an operating income of $74,000 on total income of $350,000. So that's pretty darn good. Much more than we had projected, actually. And the... So of that $74,000 in operating income that we had for the airport, we spent just under $50,000 of that on what we call local improvement projects. And these are projects that do not qualify for any federal or state funding help. Primarily, they have to do with building in crowds. And this year, the most expensive project we had was to re-roof the terminal out there. And that was why the expense was a little higher than normal, because we had to, we decided to re-roof the entire building. We also replaced windows. We've made a lot of improvements out there in the past few years. So our goal out there, which is probably five years old now in terms of fiscal management at the airport, I may have said this to you before, our goal out there is to have enough operating income left over to do the local improvement projects out of cash flow. So ideally, like the budget we just passed for the new fiscal year has, after local improvement projects, has a net income of zero. So that's what we aim for, is that. So another way of putting that is, is we don't want to dip into our reserves to pay for local improvement projects. We would ideally like to fund those out of operating income and, as well as our regular operating expenses. So this fiscal year, we were able to do that and still have $25,000 left over, even after the capital, the local improvement projects are concerned. That's not always the case, and like I said, for this year, this year we're in, just started now, we've budgeted to break even. So the other major expense we have is the capital improvement projects, which we define as projects that are eligible for state and federal funding, and we just have to provide a match. So again, from a fiscal management standpoint, our goal is to have enough in reserve to pay the matches on the qualifying projects, so that some of you who have been on the council, Counselor Lippman might remember this, is when they did the big runway project...
Eight million.
15 million, 15 years ago, whenever it was, they, the airport didn't have enough money in reserve at that point in time to pay the match, and we, and went to Laconia and Guilford and asked them to contribute money to that portion for three years, I think it was. I'm not sure what the timeframe was anymore. But that was the last time that the airport has gone to local communities and whatnot and asked them to contribute to the match fund. So, and that was a huge project.
Eight million, if I remember.
The rebuilding of the runway. So today, I'm happy to report that our reserve funds totaled just under $1 million. And that's pretty amazing, really, given the history of the airport's financial picture and whatnot. So we have just under $1 million in reserve at this point in time, in liquid assets. And the... And like I said, the, that meeting is being, that money is being held in reserve to pay the 5% match. So a typical project, not typical, this is the formula for capital improvement projects is the, if the, each year, each generally aviation airport in the country gets $250,000 from the FAA. And that's, it's nice, but it, you're not going to do a whole lot for $250,000. But it typically, that money is spent on smaller projects like updating navigation aids and fixing cracks in runways and that sort of thing. Bigger projects, you have over $250,000. You're welcome to apply for a federal grant. But if you, if you do, if you are granted that federal money, then the state has to come up with 5% of the total, and the community, we have to come up with 5% at the airport, and the federal government FAA provides 90%. So it's still a heck of a deal. So that 5% is what we keep money aside for, that we have to come up with ourselves. So if you've got a million-dollar project, you've got to have $50,000 in a local match to make that come true. So I think I have told you before that our primary project out there now, we have a long list of projects budgeted out for at least 10 years in the future, some of which probably will never happen, but we're required to at least project that as far as FAA is concerned. But the big one that I have good news on is our most dynamic project currently underway was, that's like two years old now, was to rebuild Taxiway Echo, which for those of you who have some familiarity with the airport, know that in general, the primary mile-long runway at the airport runs more or less east and west. And back in the day, there was another runway that was abandoned years ago that ran north and south as a T. And that runway was, which runs up toward Governor's Island north, that runway hasn't been used in decades, and it has deteriorated to a pretty sad state. The only thing frankly that it's used for at this point in time is the Emerson Aviation Headquarters hangars, et cetera, are up at the far end of Taxiway Echo, and so they use them to get back and forth. And if you want, if you're going to buy aviation fuel from them, not jet fuel, you can do that right down by the terminal. But if you want general aviation fuel and whatnot, you got to taxi up to the top of that, that old runway to their facility and get your gas up there. So there are a number of future building lots on the west side of that taxiway that will be greatly enhanced by rebuilding that. They're, you know, of questionable value now because of the deplorable state of the old runway that's there. So the plan is, it's a $2.7 million project, not counting the engineering, which has already been done, and that was at a cost of $200,000 roughly. But we applied for federal funding last year for the $2.7 million necessary to build a new Taxiway Echo all the way up to the, to the end of the current, up to the Emerson Aviation. And we did not get funded last year. So we reapplied this year and just found out within the last 30 days or so that we have been approved for that from the FAA. So that's good news. And the only thing we're, so the only thing we're waiting for now is the executive council has to approve the 5% state funding, which hopefully will just be a formality. And obviously, with a million dollars in reserve, we have the $135,000 that we're going to have to come up with to meet the match, the 5% match on that. So the new runway, print's kind of small here, if I can read this, is 2,100 feet long, 35 feet wide, and has a... At the bottom of it, down toward the southern end by the terminal, we're going to be adding another 6,000 square feet of, in effect, parking space for the airport there, at the southern end of that. And we also hope to, there's a pad there now, we hope is going to be occupied by a new, a new hangar operation and fueling operation as well. That's still up in the air a little bit, but that's what we're hoping, is that, that one or the other of the two fixed base operators will choose to build a new fueling station and repair station and jet hangar there, close to the current terminal. So that's, like I said, almost a formality now, that that will be approved, and we can start construction on that new taxiway, which will also now, in our opinion, make the adjoining lots along that more valuable, and hopefully will attract more tenants that would be interested in building a hangar or some sort of a manufacturing facility that would be aviation-oriented or service-oriented along that. So that's, that's pretty well it as far as the airport is concerned. So like I said, the... Most people who've been around the airport for a long time have told me that the airport has never been in better financial shape. Russ Dumas, some of you guys know Russ, I think, and Russ has been on and off that board for 25 or 30 years, and he remembers the not-so-good old days and whatnot. So he's, he's got a long memory of when we certainly didn't have a million dollars in the bank. And we got that million dollars. We had about four, when I became mayor, we had about $400,000 in reserve, so we were already in pretty good shape. But we've taken it from a half million to a million primarily by selling assets. We have a lot of surplus land out there that is not aviation-adjacent or necessary. And we sold off, with the council's permission, in the past two years, we've sold off two lots out there, one to Faze Boatyard and one to the Fish and Game Club, the Sportsman's Club and whatnot. But we still have 50 acres or more of land that we'll never use for airports on the other side of Lily Pond Road and whatnot. So hopefully, at some point in time, that land will gain in value or become, that, that land was, the biggest chunk of that is 40-something acres that was part of the Fish and Game, the property that was leased to them for years for $100 a year. And when they, when we couldn't continue to let them lease it for next to nothing and had to sell it to them, they couldn't afford to buy that whole parcel, so they chopped out nine acres around their building there. And so that left us with the... We did last year pull in 80,000, something like that, in timber. We sold selective timber on that property, and that brought in 80 grand, I think, to the Capital Reserve Fund as well, by having the timber harvested, or not clear-cut, just selectively harvested. So any questions or any information I could get any of you for the... I should be doing this once a year at least, because it's kind of... As I think all of you know, but certainly the newer members of the council need to know, there's, even though we have an airport authority, which is made up of residents of Laconia and Guilford, the final word on all this stuff is the council, because this is city of Laconia property. So anytime we sign a new lease or do anything like that, it has to be approved by the council as well as the airport authority. So we have skin in the game. Okay, thank you for your attention. What do I do with the agenda? Committee reports.
Mayor, before you go there, you're going to address the position for the council relative to...
The... Override.
Override SB 46.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Regarding the House Bill...
overriding the Governor's veto.
Yeah.
Senate Bill 446, the signing on with the other mayors in the state.
Oh, that's on unfinished business.
It is, okay.
Yep. We'll take that up on our unfinished business. So any committee reports tonight that we know of? How about liaison reports? Any liaison reports tonight? Okay, we're to citizens' requests to comment on current agenda items. This is the appropriate time for anyone who is a guest tonight who would like to address the council on any matter that is on tonight's agenda. Does anyone meet that description? No? Okay, city managers' report. Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have the two usual reports for your second meeting of the month, included in your packet tonight. And additionally, we have two other reports following up on a request that Counselor Cheney had made at the last meeting. So I will start with the projects update first. And while the city is not building any runways in our immediate area, we do have plenty of roads that we're working on right now. So Court Street, hopefully we're in the final phases of utility work being completed there. That includes some of the old gas lines that are being upgraded to new gas mains and replacing poles with a newer and stronger pole, more reliable, but also being repositioned. And along with that, there's the immediate need to be removing all wires off of those poles to get onto the new pole, because in this particular case, the old poles need to be yanked out of there when we get in there to start working on the street and the sidewalk project. So if Busby has not started back there today, they will be back in there shortly, is my understanding, dealing with the drainage work and then the road, and the roadway and the sidewalk work going on there. Busby is currently out on Pleasant Street, among other places, but Pleasant Street project has been going very well, and it is our hope to have the initial base course of pavement down at the end of this week, which will be in time for school to begin, which is beginning next week. We will be back in there working on sidewalks, and then also at some point later on this fall, doing the final binder course on the top to it. But that project has moved along very well on all fronts. We did have a public meeting that took place here a couple of Thursdays ago regarding the project that will be starting right after Labor Day, which is the Elm Street intersection at Lakeport all the way down to Stark Street. I know Counselor Cheney and Counselor Hamel were in attendance for that. I thought it was a very thorough presentation that covered a lot of areas, including parking, the number of new storm drains that are going in there, conversations about the retaining wall. So I thought our staff and our consultants did a very good job on that. So again, that work will be coming up, hopefully, starting next week or the week after. We do have a couple of projects that will be tied into the drawdown of the lake this fall. One will be the Messer Street Drainage Project in the area of Deutile. The second one will be a component of the River Walk from here at City Hall that goes down to Church Street, because that goes over the Pearly Canal area, and we have to tie into the drawdown there to do that work. The segment of the River Walk behind the Landmark is going to commence again in the next week or so, but that is ready to go. That is not in conjunction with any kind of a drawdown of water. We have completed work on Baldwin and Bowman Streets on city projects. I know the Water Department is out on Merrimack Street making some decent progress right now. I know there's concerns about some ledge in that area as they get a little bit further. I was talking with Seth Nudelman at the Water Department, Water Superintendent, a couple of weeks ago. There's one section of pipe in there that we're replacing that, I want to say he told me went back to the 1890s, and they...
We get our money back on that.
We got our money's worth out of that one. And he shared that a new section, a little bit closer to Emerald, I believe, was a 1950s or 1960s install, and that has given them nothing but problems. So don't ask me why, but some of the old clay pipes, or cast iron pipes, I guess they were, were very solid back in the day. We talked about frolicking dogs in the dog park a month or so back. I was hoping for the end of August to be, as I said to the mayor, but it looks like September 1st is the opening for the dog park, so that's on track. And I think invitations went out to all of you, and we encourage folks to bring their dogs out and help with the ribbon cutting on that day. That's a Saturday, I believe. And finally, as soon as we get through the summer season, we'll be starting with some of the drainage works at Bond Beach this fall. So we'll be engineered both Bond Beach and Bartlett Beach for drainage improvements with the budget you adopted in July. We've got funding to do Bond this year. My intention would be to bring a similar dollar amount to the next year's budget so that we can address Bartlett Beach for the work that we've already engineered. So those are the project updates. I'll stop there and take any questions, if there are any, before I move on.
Counselor Lippman?
Just elaborate a little more on the beach projects for the public's benefit.
Yeah, both of those beaches are city public beaches, and Bond is a resident-only beach, and Bartlett is open to anyone. But through the years, just with some of the heavy storms we've had and some additional runoff, there's been some erosion going on there. So we've engineered both beaches to do a fix to help better control how the water comes off those properties and make the improvements and kind of restore the beaches back to a better, a better beach condition. And Kevin Dunlevy is here as well. If I get any questions that are above my pay grade, Kevin will be here to be able to jump in and cover my back on that.
So a user of the beach would find it in a, not just, it's just not infrastructure, but they'll actually, the beach conditions will be better?
Ongoing beach conditions after rain events. The quality should be much better going forward after that.
Do you know off the top of your head, changing subjects, do you know off the top of your head, as far as the River Walk is concerned, the so-called Walgreens leg? How far down does that go?
Just going to go... Mr. Dunlevy. Kevin Dunlevy, Director of Recreation and Facilities. So the, that section will extend from, you'll remember, there was a stairwell that was built off of Main Street behind the Landmark Inn. So that improvement will extend from the bottom of that stairway across the Landmark Inn property along the river, and then across the parking... Inn property along the river and then across the parking lot that sits behind Walgreens. And it'll end what we call the Mason's Property, which is an undeveloped lot. So, I can't remember how many feet it is.
Directly in back of the Masonic Lodge?
Yes. Yeah. And then we have some private properties that we'll need to secure easements for further development of that leg.
Well, it's not going to go very far, really.
No, it's close to, I think it's 350, 400 feet, I think.
So, is, is, I mean, a planner, Dean is not here tonight, but I know, how many years ago since I've been mayor, the planning department was supposedly trying to work out easements along that whole bank of the river to get out to Fair Street. And it doesn't sound like we've made a lot of progress in that five years.
Right. And I think that'll be the next steps after the construction of this leg. It'll now start negotiating more heavily with the abutters or where places where we will need easements. All those abutters that are along that leg between Walgreens and Fair Street have all, I've reached out to them personally and they're all open to discussion. There's certainly just some details that need to be figured out. And we may need to get some funding set aside for research as far as, you know, legal research on determining, you know...
Does the cemetery property go all the way to the river?
Yes. Yep.
So, we don't need to worry about that?
We don't need to worry about that.
But we've got the foundry down there.
Hebert, Hebert Foundry, correct.
And we've got what else?
The Gilbert property.
Properties.
Dave Gilbert. And then there'd be the Mason's property closest to the Walgreens.
Now, what about that building that, I think Ed Schertalk owned that building at one point, that building that Salvation Army...
That's Gilbert. That's Gilbert. The old brick building, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a...
They had like a secondhand store there or something for years?
Yeah, I'm not certain of that. But it would be Mason's, then Gilbert, then the cemetery, then Hebert, and then Fair Street.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay.
Anyone else have any questions on the update, project update before? Okay.
Okay. So, the economic development report is there showing unemployment. There was a very minor uptick in unemployment, but again, all indications are we are at full employment in this economy right now. So, number is well below 3% for the city, county, Concord, Manchester, and the state. We have the July inflation number out. Inflation has continued to tick up a bit in the last three months. So, the July number was 2.9%. So, we're a little over 2.5%, seven months into the year. And that's the number that we will use as one of the components of the tax gap calculation in formulating next year's budget. Speaking of next year's budget, I think Donna and I had shared with you that it's pretty much a year-round process. So, information and requests have gone out to departments on our capital improvements programs, which as much as the mayor was pointing out, a 10-year list for airport projects. We will be starting the next year's budget with our capital improvement projects, kind of looking at the six-year calendar of balancing needs and wants, prioritizing them, trying to put a schedule together that also helps kind of keep the funding request relatively on an even keel as opposed to several big projects all hitting in one year and you're looking to have, you know, $10 million in capital, which is probably not a realistic, achievable option for us. We look to kind of smooth that out and kind of keep, you know, keep the projects in a similar cost basis for us. So, that is getting going right now and that committee will start meeting over the next couple of weeks. Two reports in your packet that Kevin Dunlevy put together that were requests that Council Chini had made at the last meeting. One was dealing with the Opichi Cove brush cutting and what we can and can't do there in order to keep the view of Opichi, of Lake Opichi, as you drive by. The second one dealing with a conservation area with the Pearly Pond of some overgrowth of some trees or at least one tree in particular that had fallen into the pond and how we can remove it. And then also for the health of the pearly oak there, Kevin had conversations with a state arborist, I believe, and you have some photos in your packet. So, rather than me kind of reread through the report, I'm happy to have you put questions or comments forward and Kevin is here to assist in responding and addressing to those as well.
Any questions on those two issues, the brush cutting?
I was, I see that we're talking about brush cutting, I presume in the winter or fall, period, as I understand this. I guess the question I have is what happens in the spring when the growth starts again? Are we going to maintain it or do you have to wait till winter time to do it again?
Sure. As far as Opichi, that area goes along Opichi Cove, Opichi Bay is considered a protected water under the Shoreland Protection Act. So, a little different set of rules apply to that than Pearly Pond. The regulations under the Shoreland Protection Act say that you can cut brush to no less than three feet. So, our plan is, it's ideal to do that in the winter for accessibility and also it's just a better time to be doing it. So, our plan is to do that this winter at Opichi, cut it to that three-foot level. And then over time, you know, we can go back every year and cut that back so that, of course, it is going to grow over the course of a year and, you know, how much, you know, maybe a foot or so depending on the type of plant.
I've also noticed that the brush has started to creep in towards the sand. There's like a spur that runs in. Are we able to take that down?
Yes. Some of that's just higher grass and yes, we could. And that would be part of a, could also be incorporated into any beach improvement that we do. We talked about these drainage projects that we're doing. There used to be a swale that extended in the back of Opichi Cove Beach and it actually outletted further north. And then over time, that swale has just become vegetated and filled with sand and now that drainage swale behind the beach cuts itself short. So, we could address that issue, but that can be cut. If it's grass or that type of thing, we can cut it shorter.
My hope is we can improve the appearance.
Sure. Yeah. And I understand what you're trying to accomplish here, for sure.
Okay. Thanks. And Pearly, are we trying to get into the pond and get the dead wood out of there?
We have done, removed some. Public Works Crew has sent a crew in. Some of it is a pretty good-sized logs that are in the mud and they're hard to remove. We have to access it from a private property that we received permission for. So, we have removed a fair amount out of there, still have a little bit more to do. As far as the brush around the pond, I'm getting clarification through the conservation technician of the planning department who's reached out to DES to say exactly what we can cut along the edge of that pond. The city, when it was deeded that property, there were stipulations that we would try to keep that pond open and accessible. Some of the language in the deed contradicts what DES regulations allow us to do. So, we're trying to abide by the rules, but also try to follow the spirit of the deed. So, we'll do what we can. Some of the language in the deed says, really describes possibly dredging out the pond. That's going to be a difficult thing to accomplish with the existing rules because the natural course of a pond like that is to eventually become vegetated and its life cycle is to eventually turn into a swamp. But we'll do what we can within the regulations.
I hope we can cut near the road so that folks can enjoy the pond.
Sure. Yeah.
And see it.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Do you have anything else?
I have one final item. So, December 24th would be a normal city council meeting, which would not be a meeting because of the Christmas Eve holiday. So, we'll be looking for ideas of what people's travel schedules and availability may be that week for the 26th, 27th, 28th. Don't need tonight, but if you can shoot me an email that I can confer with the mayor on where we think we might have the best luck for a full, if not a full council, then definitely a quorum to hold that meeting unless there was a decision to, you know, not hold a fourth, you know, a second meeting for the fourth week in December. But we don't need an answer tonight, but just wanted to kind of land it on your radar.
Christmas is on Tuesday this year.
Christmas is Tuesday. So, just throwing that out there for folks to start to look at their calendars if they could.
Okay. Any questions or comments for the city manager? No? Okay. Thank you. All right. We are on to new business.
I'm sorry, Mr. Rick, if I do one more thing. One of Council Chini's other requests was dealing with the Airbnb or the vacation rental by owner, VRBO. So, I've had conversations with our planning director and we will have, I don't want to say some preliminary thoughts for you, but we'll have some range of suggestions to start the conversation in a little more depth and we'll be doing that for the September 10th meeting.
At the September 10th?
At the September 10th meeting, yes.
The Opichi Indian statue in terms of the plan and working on that, I know we solicited some donations and we're planning on maybe doing some sort of preservation there. Can we get updated on that?
We'll have Kevin come up. Kevin's in charge of all things tonight. I know we have secured it. I know we did some kind of, I'll say x-raying for lack of a better term, but to determine what's there. You know, preliminary understanding is there's a significant amount of internal rot in there. But Kevin...
Right. So, we have had tests done. It's a boring that's done into the wood to determine what's really truly left of the material. And what we've found is it's a very thin shell of wood on the exterior and that, we're going to have some challenges on trying to preserve that. I've been in contact with the original sculptor. He's convinced that the Indian can be salvaged. I'm not convinced of his opinion. He hasn't seen it. He, and I'm not sure if we'll be able to get him up here to look at it. But I think there's going to be some significant challenges with preserving that. We have done some fundraising, which hasn't amounted to a whole lot of money. I will say we haven't devoted a lot of time to fundraising. It's just based on other things that we're focused on. But I've had several people that have reached out to me with some ideas that I think we can explore in the upcoming weeks and month here to have a plan in place here before winter because I want to have that removed by winter if it needs to be removed or have a good, solid plan to have it preserved for the future, one way or the other.
So...
I know we had talked about at one point, maybe, I don't remember, was that the table or about some conversation of if there was need to help preserve that, that we could potentially take that out of non-Capital Reserve.
Absolutely. There were a few people who wanted to donate either services or dollars and they've stepped up and Kevin's been in touch with them. And now it's just, you know, certainly non-Capital Reserve can be used to do it as well. It's just finding a fix to it, if you will, that is viable and is going to preserve it versus, you know, doing something and finding out, you know, we're only just postponing the inevitable by, you know, a couple of years or whatever the timeframe might be.
I raise it only because of Council Chini's point about trying to improve the appearance of the park. I think, you know, the current arrangement is set up to keep people safe, but it does take away from the appearance of the...
Correct. And we're not unique. These trees that have been carved by this individual, if you do any Google search, you'll see that many of them are suffering the same fate with various outcomes. And I will remind anybody that's donated, we are tracking on who's donated money. So, if the money isn't used, it will be refunded to those that have donated the money. But I think we have some challenges with that and hopefully, it's difficult to find people that have the skills to be able to deal with something like this. It's a very unique thing.
So, I have a procedural question here that, I'm not advocating a position, I'm just asking a question. And that is, so, who made the decision and how did the decision get made that if this is going to be done, it's going to be done with donations?
Well, I think, I think the genesis of that was a conversation I had with the original sculptor who recommended that I seek support from the state, from citizens of the state and volunteers because this, he seemed to have taken significant pride in this project when it was originally done was a complete volunteer effort. It was, everything was volunteer and by donation. And he emphasized maybe following that path to get good volunteer and community support for the project. And if additional funding was necessary, we could approach other groups or the city council or whoever. So, I took his...
But it's not a matter of somebody went to city council and also says, "We're not spending a dime on that." So, now we have to go out and solicit private donations to pay for it.
No, and I...
I don't ever remember that coming to the council.
No, no. And I don't think, and I just took the lead, I felt like I needed to reach out to the carver. I mean, and the question is, who owns the Indian? I mean...
So, we don't own it?
Well, it was a gift to the state of New Hampshire. So, I don't know if it's in...
I'm sure they'll pay to fix it.
So, it's a little vague.
Don't be drinking that stuff.
But to say who took the lead in that fundraising effort, I would take that blame for that with the recommendation from the original carver who recommended that that would be the process that he's followed. And that's with the understanding that it was always intended to be a volunteer and a donation type of effort from its original origins.
I just make the point, we're in Bolduc Chambers and if I remember, Council Bolduc was one of the people that helped maintain that by applying stain and split to it over the years.
Right.
And I think Council Hamel as well.
Right. Right.
Again, I'm not saying a position, I'm just, I'm just trying to make the point that if you come back to us and say it's going to cost $60,000 to fix a thing and we think it'll last another 20 years or something or other if we spend the $60,000 and you can't raise the $60,000 privately to do that, then at some point in time, it seems to me, whether it's the state or the city or a combination, somebody needs to make a decision on whether or not we're going to use public funds to do that or not.
Right.
One way or the other.
Right.
I didn't realize it technically belonged to the state because they're not going to pay for it. You know, I'm sure they would be happy to transfer ownership to us.
And I don't know what's, no doubt. And maybe it's the people of the state of New Hampshire.
In several public hearings, too.
Exactly. Anyway...
So, I'll keep you updated on that and I'll add it to the project updates.
I'm not suggesting the city pay for it. I'm just saying that at some point, it might be appropriate to at least discuss that angle of it.
Understood.
If we treasure it, I don't know whether we do or not, but if we do...
Right.
Are we going to let it be torn down for lack of funds?
Right. Understood.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
That's all I've got.
Okay. Now, questions or comments for the manager? I've gone over it a little bit. None? Okay. We're on to new business. First item of new business is on page 31 of your packet and that has to do with the sale of lot number 12 in the Lakes Business Park at 344 Hansel Avenue. This sale has been approved, you have a copy of the purchase and sales agreement in your packet, has been approved by the, I don't even know what we call that board, what do we call that board?
Lakes Business Park Commission.
Commission, yes, by the Lakes Business Park Commission. And so, that has to be, as the memo says, that has to be approved by both the Board of Selectment in Guilford because the land is in Guilford and they are partners in this project and by the Laconia City Council. So, the commission is recommending to you tonight that you approve the sale of this lot on Hansel Avenue to DASLTC Limited Liability Corporation for $115,000. I will tell you that DASLTC is, to you, the Morissette Brothers, Peter and Kevin. And they own lot 13, the one right next door that they bought last year from the commission. And if you haven't been down Hansel Avenue a while, you might go out of your way a little bit the next time you're in that neighborhood because you will see that on lot 13, they have already a building up there. And one of two buildings they have proposed to put on that property that have been approved. And basically, they are a shop buildings, high-ceiling shop buildings with a smaller office building, maybe 20 by 20, something like that, I think, attached to the front of them. So, a small company that had a manufacturing concern or somebody with a small truck fleet or whatever could rent the front of the building for an office and then have their shop, if you will, or their storage or their inventory and whatnot right behind it in the bigger building. So, they have two, one of those they're intending to use for their own business. And then, and then there's three other similar buildings that are planned on that lot and one of which is now finished and the other one has not started. So, their intent is to occupy... to occupy one of those four units themselves and rent the other three to tenants. So, what they're doing, and this is noted in this staff, is they want to buy the lot next door to them also, that's the one that's on the table tonight, because they have a prospective tenant for doing something similar on that land. They don't have a deal at this point in time, but that's their aim, is to develop similar facilities on the lot next door as well, and they think they have some leads on some people who would be interested. And so they're not going to build spec building on that, but they would build a suit, so to speak, for someone they've talked to. And the reason that this agreement with them, as is specified in the memo there somewhere, doesn't it, about the timing? Thought I saw, yes, provision included, it states that the buyer shall have 36 months to begin construction from the closing date. So, that's extraordinary. Normally, it's 12, I think, isn't it, or is it two years?
Begin construction within 12 months and finish it up?
Normally, when we sell, the covenant that goes with it is you have to begin construction within 12 months. So, they, we agreed to allow them the extra two years, if you will. That was part of their offer, because at this moment, they don't have a specific plan. They have some leads, as I said, of people they want to sell the building to now. So, what happens if they don't start construction in three years, is we have the right to buy the property back from them if they fail to start construction. But we did give them some extra leeway on it, because of the way they explained it, they, we know what they want to use the building, but the property for, but at the moment, they don't have a commitment, a firm commitment from somebody to lease it from them. So, we're giving them a little extra time for that.
We had the option, an option of doing an option, and the commission felt outright sale was in our best interest.
Yeah, they originally came to us and asked for an option to purchase the property, and the commission was not terribly enthusiastic about that, and said, "Instead, we'll give you 36 months to begin construction instead." So, any questions before we get to motions?
How's this price of this lot compared to the lot they bought last year?
On a per, on a per-square-foot basis, it's comparable. On a, I mean, that was part of the long conversation we had here. I don't have the list in front of me, frankly, of all the lots that have sold there and what they've sold for, and the prices are kind of all over the place as opposed to recently, but we tried to find a price that was in line with recent sales on acre-by-acre basis. Now, the list price on that property was, what, $160-something, I think?
I don't remember, but, you know, the prices vary in part, too, based on when they were established and who did it, but also, in terms of what the sale prices are, they also reflect sometimes what the improvements in the property need to be made in order to...
Yeah, how big a building are you going to build on, and how much is it going to add to the tax rolls? We usually set a minimum that, that, you know, you have to build at least a half a million-dollar building, or whatever the number is on that property. That figures in, so the more, the more expensive, if you will, the project you're proposing, the more likely the commission has been to compromise on the purchase price for the deal. But this, this one is, again, I don't have the square footage figures, but it's on a price-per-acre basis, it's in the ballpark of what we have gotten in recent years for those lots, which is considerably less than they were listed for originally 20 years.
How long have they been for sale? Did you say 20 years?
20 years. Roughly 18, something like that, yeah.
And Dershow Park land is not selling?
And, you know, the hindrance is that, I mean, there's a number of hindrances, but certainly one of the hindrances is the cost of lot development. The, and I don't remember, frankly, a discussion of that, a big discussion of it anyway, 20 years ago when this was in the planning process, was, yes, we have the utilities in the ground there, and that's a plus, but these lots can be really expensive to do site work on, and we have lost some deals because of that, where the cost of developing the lot without the building were prohibitive, and deals fell through because of that, that, and we're getting to the point where we're pretty much out of the lots that are relatively flat. The ones that are left are, would take considerable amount of site work. But it's not, we're not talking about Kansas here, that, where you just draw a line out on the... They're going to be tough lots.
Okay. Thank you.
Make a motion.
All right, Counsel Levitt makes a motion to approve the vote of the Lakes Business Park Commission for the sale of lot number 12 in the Lakes Business Park in the amount of $115,000, and to authorize the city manager to sign the required documents in connection with the sale. Is there a second to that motion? Counsel Chini seconds that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Four votes, the affirmative, that passes unanimously. The second item of new business tonight, item 20B, my understanding is that has been withdrawn from the agenda.
I would appreciate it if the council would withdraw that, yes.
We will not be discussing that tonight. So, that takes us to polling hours, right?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, if I just could, so that item's just going to go away, it's not coming back to you at another time, it's done.
It's gone away.
Gone away.
Okay. Did I, I'm sorry, I didn't come back to you on the lot.
No, you actually made the point on some of the sites are much more challenging with the site work on that for topography and other reasons, so that sometimes reflects into the price as well.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, you got it, so.
No mission there. Okay. All these are off of that. So, we are down to polling hours. So, that's on page 41 of your packet, and is a request to set the polling hours for the September 11th primary and the general election on November 6th in Laconia from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It's requested by, oh, it's 3:00 p.m., 7:00?
3:00 p.m. would be wonderful.
Like that 3:00.
The Secretary of State's office would be up here in a heartbeat.
All right. Would anybody like to make the motion to set the polling hours for those two dates for 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.?
Sure.
Counsel Haynes makes a motion. Is there a second? Somebody, anybody? Counsel Hosmer, thank you. Any discussion?
Just for the public's benefit, the clerk could tell us what the elections are, they're going to be on the local ballot?
You're putting me on the spot, I apologize.
You have county...
Oh, man, this is a quiz. You want multiple choice?
Yeah, there's a lot of people, that's why. I can actually give you the rundown. Give me one second. I'm going to cheat. I just put the sample ballots on the city website.
That's a good thing to...
Well, we have governor, we have two congressional, we have congressional district, they would be at the top of the ballot. There's no senate election in New Hampshire this year, so for both parties, we have a primary for governor, congress, and then all the various state offices, including state senate and state representative.
County commission.
County commission.
And county commission, thank you.
County treasurer, registered deeds, probate.
Sheriff.
What'd you say? Oh, I thought you said sheriff. Sheriff, yep. County attorney.
State and county offices, except there's no senate, U.S. senate election this year.
And could you just also, in terms of people registering to vote and anything like that, what the...
So, what's tomorrow, Wednesday? So, Wednesday's the last date to vote in the city clerk's office. They'll have to vote the day of the election.
Register.
Register, I'm sorry, register to vote the day of the election. They can't change their party until after the primary, so September 12th. There are three ballots, Republican, Democrat, and Libertarian.
So, if you are a registered...
If you are an independent or a Democrat.
Republican or Democrat, you can't change parties at this point?
Correct, or Libertarian, you cannot. If you're undeclared, you can go in and choose your ballot, which one you want to choose.
So, if you're a Republican and you want to vote in the Democratic Party, you can't do so at this point.
An absentee ballot deadline?
Yep, those are available in our office.
Till what?
Till the day of the election. Yes.
And then the top two vote-getters in each of those races will be on the general election ballot.
Correct. We also have Ward 1 and Ward 6 for school board.
We have what?
Ward 1 and Ward 6, school board members. So, those two wards will get an extra ballot.
Glad you mentioned that, yes. We have, so we have two school board races.
Correct. Ward 1 and 6.
Are they, are, is there more than one candidate in either of them? No, there is not. Not surprising. Okay.
Thank you. Nope.
All right, any other discussion of that motion to set polling hours?
Thank you, passed.
All those in favor of 7 to 7, please raise a hand. Four votes, the affirmative, thank you. That motion carries unanimously. All right, that is all of new business, and we are to unfinished business, which is a discussion regarding the solar energy bill veto override, and we need a motion to take this off the table.
Summit.
By Counsel Hosmer, seconded by Counsel Haynes. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Four votes, the affirmative, and is now back before us. For a brief summary of the situation, I'm sure all the counselors know this, so I'll keep this really short. I noted at our last meeting that I had been asked to sign a letter that was circulating on behalf of all the mayors of New Hampshire, 13 mayors, asking the mayors to sign on to a petition, if you will, urging the legislature to override the governor's veto of Senate Bill 446, which was the so-called net metering bill. That ties into our solar energy project that's on the drawing boards here in Laconia. So, I had indicated that at that time, that there were two mayors, myself and the mayor of Concord, who had declined to sign that or had not done it yet, that all the other mayors in the state, 11 of them, had agreed to sign that letter, and that outlined my concern over the veto override, but said that I would be happy to sign the letter on behalf of the city and behalf of the council if so directed, without prejudice. So, a motion would be, then we can discuss it. A motion would be in order at this point in time, if it's the will of the council to direct the mayor to sign the letter on behalf of the city of Laconia and the Laconia City Council.
I'd make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so that motion is made by Counsel Hosmer. Is there a second? Counsel Levitt seconds the motion. All right, discussion.
You know, I think there's some information out there. I think we may actually have a guest in the audience, is that right, on this topic, with respect to the impact on the competitive aspect of rates of the legislation? Not, not have, as a council have not heard support to not sign the letter. I know it has an impact on the city's budget of $100,000, and I guess also from a neighborly aspect of things in terms of, you know, the Lakes region here between Franklin and Laconia. I think it's an important project for one of our neighbors as well, so I'd like us to consider it. I know Counsel Hamel's not here tonight. I know he would want us to as well.
Counsel Hosmer? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and also thanks for the opportunity to put this under unfinished business and give us a couple of weeks for, to do a little work on it. And I will disclose, as I did last time, I have done some work in Concord on behalf of the Clean Energy Collective, who was a supporter of this bill last session. But I refreshed my memory of some of the, what I think were relevant aspects of this bill, and I share certainly what Counsel Levitt has said. I support what he said as well. And I went back and looked at some documentation, because there was some discussion about, is this just pushing costs back on to ratepayers? And there seems to be some assertions made by the governor that claims there might be $5 to $10 million pushed back on to ratepayers. I'm not really sure where that number came from. When I look at the fiscal note associated with SB 446, there is a zero impact, zero cost associated with the passage of this bill to the state, which I think is particularly positive. And second of all, when I look at the Public Utilities Commission and the research and the work that they've done, they've come to the conclusion that there would not be an impact on ratepayers across the board. So, that sort of alleviates some of my concerns, but I think on the positive side here, really, this is a renewable energy is not only good for our communities, it's good for the city of Laconia, but I also think it's great for the business community and the taxpayers in general. So, I would encourage you to sign on to this letter and pass it along to the governor.
Counsel Levitt?
And I'm not sure if I have my facts straight on this one, so I stand corrected if I'm not, but my understanding, it also has had, or potentially has an effect on, again, another neighbor up in Bridgewater in terms of the plant there.
That's a different bill.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's the biomass bill, 365, I think, was the number of that one. So, we're talking about the solar bill here, which is 446.
Thank you, Mayor. I, had we voted on this two weeks ago, I would have voted against encouraging you to sign. Subsequently, I've read the PUC report, and in fact, talked to a person on the PUC I've known a long time and who I have a great deal of faith in, and have now arrived at the point where I think, as Counsel Hosmer has suggested, there is zero or very, very limited impact on the average ratepayer as a result of this. So, tonight, I will join the other counselors who are voting to ask you to sign the letter, but it's, I do it a bit reluctantly, but I, I do think it's, it's a good move.
Counsel Haynes?
Mr. Mayor, I understand how the other counselors feel, but I have to agree with you. I, I guess one of the things that really concerns me is that, you know, the state really doesn't want an energy policy. They just want to nickel-and-dime everything, and I, I encourage you not to sign it.
Counsel Levitt?
I know if we had Counsel Bounds and Counsel Hamel, they would be in support of the majority position here, based on...
I know Counsel Bounds was. I have, I have not heard from Counsel Hamel on this subject. I have heard from Counsel Bounds, and he made it clear that he would be, if he were here tonight, he would be voting in favor of asking me to sign the letter. So, what I want to add tonight is, is some information, because I, too, have done some further digging since, since our last meeting, and, you know, I must confess that, that I was incredibly ignorant about this whole thing before this came up. And more disturbing to me is that I will have to admit that I was woefully ignorant about the details of the solar energy project that we already approved. And I have learned some things since then about that, so I'm glad we did this as an exercise, because I've learned a lot more about the project that we already approved that I didn't know, or before the, before we voted on that and agreed to lease this land. That lease, by the way, has, I understand from the city manager, has not been consummated. We approved it, but New England Solar Gardens has not signed on from their end of things. The overall general statement I would make, and I think I have alluded to this, or I alluded to it last time, is the, for all the information that is out there and is being circulated by the, by people on both sides of this issue, there's, in my opinion, an incredible lack of candor on both sides in trying to aid the public to figure out what's, what's really going on here and what the real issues are. I think both sides are at fault in not doing that and putting out, spinning the issue, so to speak, to make it look like motherhood and apple pie to both sides, and this is a no-brainer and whatnot, and I don't... And I don't think, I think, you know, I will admit that it, from a technical standpoint, it's way over my head, and I'm doing my best to try to understand it. But as an example of what I'm talking about here, this is what we signed off on here, this proposal. This isn't the contract, but this is the cover sheet we were given and whatnot. And we were told that we were going to have, what was it, just under $100,000 a year in income coming into the city? Well, as it turned out, turns out that's not the case. And the reason, the primary reason for that is that half of that money, $55,000 of it, was to come back to us in the form of a rebate of one cent per kilowatt hour of electricity used. In other words, we would buy electricity for the city from this plant, this solar plant, building in Laconia, and we would get a one percent, one cent rebate for every kilowatt hour that we got in return for agreeing to buy the power from this plant. And what the city manager has advised me is that his intent is to buy zero from that plant. So we won't get a dime of rebate. So none of that power that's being generated at that plant is going to be used in the city of Laconia. It's all going to be sold to Eversource, every single kilowatt hour of it. And this is being referred to as a quote "net metering" bill, but as best I can tell, there's no net metering involved in this whatever. It's simply a matter of a private business coming in here, leasing land from us, selling the power they generated to Eversource, which has to buy it, can't say no, up to five megawatts per year. And Eversource has to pay them the retail rate of eight cents a kilowatt hour, or that's what the current rate is, I guess, is eight cents an hour. So for us to buy the power, they offered to sell it to us for eight cents a kilowatt hour, the New England Solar Gardens. Plus, we would get a penny rebate for every hour used, correct me if I'm wrong here. But I'm being advised by the city manager that we can buy power cheaper than eight cents.
And we actually just went out to bid on this concurrently, so in the last.
Seven's cheaper than seven cents.
Right, in the last three weeks, we just received bids from several brokers on the independent energy market, electricity, and the low rate came in at the high sixes. I want to say it was six point six something per kilowatt on the city side, and a little bit higher than that on the water side. But, so it would have been available to us had it been advantageous. But our rate that we literally just got a couple of weeks ago came in in the high sixes.
So it was my understanding that we weren't going to buy the electricity from the beginning anyways, and that you carried $100,000 in the budget as the impact of the contract and the what have you.
I think we only carried $30,000 in this budget, because at that point, we didn't know if it was going to go through and get built, and only necessarily counting on the land lease money and the pilot agreement money. And if the other money materialized, based on where our electric rates came in through the bidding process, we would have been able to use them against city electric bills, and I think I mentioned to you, school bills, water department, housing authority, in order to use up those kilowatts internally. But they would have been reflected not necessarily as a revenue to the city, they would have been an offset on various bills. Electric bills for city, school, water, and housing authority, if we needed to go further to use up.
I just wish we'd had a better, I should speak myself, had a better understanding of the dynamics of this project when it was first. We didn't know that it was contingent upon this bill being signed. I mentioned that last time. We didn't know, I didn't know, that this $55,000 is quote "available," but only if you use that much in power. And since we're not going to use the power, we're not going to get that $55,000. So, I mean, that doesn't mean that we should sneeze at the $45,000 or whatever it is that we are going to get, assuming the plant is built. But anyway, I just, you know, it, and to your point, Councilor Hosmer, about the, a couple of you mentioned the, there's varying numbers out there about is this going to be passed on to the ratepayers, and if so, how much. And, you know, the Business Engineering Association came up with one number, and the PUC came up with another number and whatnot. But I read the summary of the PUC report, and if I read it correctly, basically, they were saying that it wasn't going to have a significant impact on ratepayers because it's so small. That was their conclusion, that the amount of power being generated under this bill is so infinitesimal compared to how much we use in the state, that it's just not statistically going to make a significant difference. And, you know, so it's not, you know, whatever it is, if it's $1 million or 10 million or whatever, you divide that by everybody that's a utility customer, and it's just not much money. I saw one, I saw one estimate that said it would cost the average household like less than $2 a year or something like that.
I was under that impression as well. I think it was on page seventy-two and seventy-three of the PUC findings where that information was available, and I found that to be quite interesting, and I agree with you, Mayor. I was not, under the impression, the city was anticipating $100,000 a year. And maybe I'd missed that point completely when I joined the council, I'm not sure. But the number, or at least initially, was $30,000 a year is the one that I was working with there. So the idea, now we're up to maybe $45,000 a year, which is nothing, which is good for the city. The idea that there's another $55,000 in rebate that's available if we were to purchase this power, well, obviously, you're only going to purchase power from the producer who gives you the best price for this. So the idea that we would depend on that $55,000 every year or thereabouts going forward, I don't think any one of us would see that as a solid revenue stream that would come in for a period of time because really, it's the open market right now, and if it's 6.6 cents per kilowatt hour, yet we can buy it at eight, even with the cent rebate gets us down to seven, it's still better to buy it on the open market. But in a fluid situation, a fluid pricing model, I think certainly that maybe comes back into play where it becomes advantageous to us to buy it from them. But I'm glad we're buying it for less than eight cents or netting, if we're below the net seven cents per kilowatt hour.
You know, I just, I just want, maybe you and I are the only two, but it's that way. But I just want people to understand that what's going on here is that the utility companies are being forced to buy this power at a retail rate. It's that simple. That the companies aren't going to build these projects if they don't get a guaranteed rate of return, period. And so we're, we in effect are guaranteeing them a profit, that they need to operate these things. So it's, you know, it is what it is. You can spin that any way you want, but that's what it is. It's not a product they're going to be selling on the open market. They have a guaranteed customer and a guaranteed price.
My heart doesn't ache for Eversource. They'll be okay. And I'm glad there's more competition on the market.
Eversource will certainly be okay.
Eversource will certainly.
We'll argue that point with you. But Eversource isn't going to eat that cost.
No, they're not, they're certainly not going to eat that cost, but I think competition is good for the ratepayer. I think it's good for the market. I think it's good for municipalities. So more competition in the market and more energy on the grid to accommodate the demands of the future, our future years, I think, is good. So I think that inures to our benefit as ratepayers. But I understand what you're saying. It's hardly an easy one to decipher at times.
Yes. And I'm grateful for the conversation with all of you, because I think we've all learned a little bit. I certainly have, and about the ins and outs and how complicated this thing is. And as I said the last time we met, I don't think this is, to me, this was not an easy call. I see every point that you all make, including your comment about helping a neighboring community, that, you know, I get all that. I don't, this is not an easy call, I don't think. I just, I guess Councilor Haynes and I just, you know, don't think that there should be guaranteed markets, guaranteed prices for things like this. But that's, that's the reality. I certainly will have no, assuming this passes, and it looks like it will easily, I have no issue with signing the letter on behalf of you all. Anything else? Okay, we ready to vote then? So the motion on the floor is to direct the mayor to sign the letter in question and call for a vote. All is in favor, please raise a hand. All is opposed, please raise a hand. We have three votes in the affirmative, one in the negative. The motion carries, and I will be happy to sign the letter. And I will also notify them tomorrow that I will do that. Okay, council comments. Any council comments tonight? Councilor Cheney?
I'm sorry to keep doing this, Mayor. I, I've had a meeting with the Public Works Director with regards to the roads that are not accepted at this time. And I speak tonight to ask that we, if it would be possible to have counsel, legal counsel, come and talk to us. Some of the, some of my constituents have sent me reams of paper, but it includes some paperwork from the New Hampshire Municipal Association, which talks about dedicated and accepted, a process called dedication and acceptance. And it talks about that roads may be accepted by an express or implied process. The implied process is by acts such as opening up or improving a street, repairing it, removing snow from it, or assigning police patrols to it. The doctrine of implied acceptance of public highways was revived in a law in a Supreme Court case, which the municipal association suggests intensifies the legal risk associated with public acceptance of private roads. When a town nevertheless performs such work, it can readily be viewed as evidence of implied acceptance that private roads, that a private road is a public highway. And again, that's from the municipal association. In fact, part of this is, they suggest that the time has come to eliminate that doctrine of dedicate and accept. So I'd like to find out if there's a way, or if legal counsel can explain to us what rights the council has to accept roads that may fall into the category of implied acceptance based on years of maintaining them and plowing them, et cetera. The other part of that, of my interest, is one particular road, Janes Road in the Weirs, is a road that the Butters paid half the cost to bring the road up to standard. The city paid the other portion. And at the time, Frank Tilton sent a letter to one of the residents in which he said, "I presented your proposal to the Laconia City Council and have their concurrence to proceed." I'm skipping over parts of it. It was a $4,370 cost split between the city and the residents on the street. Now, this was back in ninety-nine. Costs were quite a bit cheaper then. But skipping on, he said additionally, "The city is willing to work with a particular company to ensure that the resultant storm drainage plan is adequate." And he says, "Since we will be maintaining the road in the future, we must stay involved during the execution of this project." I think Janes Road, we can accept shortly. I think we should accept Janes Road, hopefully at the next meeting. There may be other roads in that position, and we certainly should be looking at that. But, you know, we're starting to send out letters to these residents that their road is private. I think we should be working diligently to find those roads that we can accept and those situations where we need the participation of the residents on those roads sooner rather than later. I mean, you know, several of the residents I've talked to said, "I know you're going to plow my road this year, but what about next year?" I think we ought to start now to deal with whatever those problems may be for next year, not wait till next year to deal with them. So I guess, two parts. One, I would ask that we accept Janes Road based on this letter from the city at that time, the Director of Public Works. I have copies of the invoices, I, so, at which I'd be happy to leave. And the second item is that we have input from city solicitor or whoever about what dedication and acceptance means, what can we do to accept hopefully more of these roads. I mean, these, most of us have lived on these roads a long time and think we're living on public roads. It's shocking to find out suddenly that we're not. And I'm hoping the city can find a way to accept the vast majority of them. I understand there are one or two, one that I'm aware of. There's a deed restriction that prevents the city from accepting the road, or at least as I understand it. But certainly, I'd like to find more of these Janes Roads or Avenue.
How are you spelling that?
J-A-N-E-S.
J-A-N.
N as in Nora, J-A-N as in Nora, E-S, Ave. It's up off of Centenary Ave in the Weirs. But as I say, you know, these people did meet the city halfway on improvements and were told that the city will be maintaining the road in the future. So I think if there's an indication of implied acceptance, that's certainly it. A letter from our Public Works Director saying the city council agreed to the proposal and that he intends to participate in the construction and stay involved, is his exact term, because we will be maintaining the road going forward. So Janes Road and a discussion about dedication and acceptance at some, it doesn't have to be the next meeting, but sometime soon. I'd like to get this moving.
Input?
I think we certainly do that. I would probably suggest if the council wanted to hold a special meeting night, maybe just call it a workshop on this topic and try to do it at a dedicated evening as opposed to trying to do it in the course of the agenda. So if we wanted to look at September seventeenth, which would be a couple of weeks, if we could make sure legal counsel was available, if that was the desire of the council to do it that night, or if that schedule doesn't work, we could look to do it, you know, in early October type of thing as well.
So, a superficial question, trying to remember where we left this the last time. A couple of things. One is, I, for some reason, I have the impression, or had the impression, that this was a relatively low priority in the Public Works Department and that when there was excess time or extra time available or whatnot, research was very time-consuming and whatnot on these roads and that it was sort of worked in when time was available kind of thing on a staff, from a staff standpoint. And that it was, it would take an overwhelming effort to do all of this at once, so to speak.
Correct. And that's how we're still approaching it. We're doing it.
We'll pick at it here and there, but in the meantime, council had made it clear that it was not going to shut somebody off or a street off without due process.
And we have not shut anybody off, with the exception of, we gave notice on the correspondence that I shared, I'll share with all of you a couple of weeks ago, on the Pendleton Beach Road only, where you had a copy of the deed, and that was one where it was indicated that upon the transfer, this road shall remain private. And those folks we put on, had discussions with first, and put on notice with them over a year ago at this point.
So I think the question then would be, or one of the questions would be, in terms of answering the councilor's request here, would be to say, "If we're going to do this now rather than later, what would it cost, so to speak? What would, how much effort would be required to do it all now and get it behind us?"
Well, if I might, I mean, the city engineer.
Well, if I might, I mean, the city engineer has provided me with quite a bit of documentation of work that he's accomplished, I think he's done the same with you, because we have the majority of the, of the roads. So I mean, a lot of that work, I think, has been done. I, my only concern, I'm sorry, Henry, to, to hold you up, my only concern is not to let this run out to the point where, because we also have an insurance company to deal with, who says, "We can't be doing this." At some point, we've got a, we've got a fisher cut bait.
Counselor Lippman.
So I think the, the approach that you're talking about, trying to find a way to, you know, because if you've been paying taxes, and you think you have, been on a city-maintained road, I think we've been trying to do research that supports the position. I guess the issue is how much research we can do simultaneously, but I think a disposition ought to be, and it's great that the individuals on that road came up with some of that research, so I guess to the extent we've identified the roads, and people can come forward and provide the type of information that you provided, that, that's helpful to the cause, to try to help the citizens, because I think, you know, when this first came up, council's disposition was not, we didn't, we didn't want to go through this.
Oh, I'm sure that's true. I, I, but I, I think what I'm suggesting, and the reasoning I'm, I'm asking for legal counsel, is if this dedication and acceptance process can include history, the city having a history of maintaining the road implies that we've accepted it previously, then that might, that might remove a lot of the concern about accepting the roads. They might not have to go, might not have to be as, as laborious to get them into the city's inventory.
My question, I don't have the answer for this, but I'm wondering whether we should be looking at a legal opinion first, before we start the conversation, so we, so we know the lay of the land legally, and what the parameters are, so they can give us a little bit of guidance as we act on individual streets and roads in the city.
I think that's what I was saying, was that I want to hear, you know, what, all I've read is what the municipal association has put out. I'm sure there's more to it, that's not a criticism of the municipal association, but I, I suspect, at least in my limited experience with lawyers, they can find almost any fact they want. But I'd just like to hear from our, our council, what all the parameters are. That's separate from the Jane issue, which I think I would move at the appropriate time to accept Jane Ave, based on this paperwork. Obviously, staff needs time to review it.
Your question to the attorney would be, "Why can't I?"
I guess, yes.
You know, "Give me a good reason why I can't do this."
Right.
For Jane Road, or in general?
Jane Road in particular. Is there a reason why I can't do this? Oh, you're forgetting there's this, you know-
Yep, yes, yes, and I understand that.
Case law, or whatever, but-
I understand that that may well be the case.
It's a logical question.
Yeah, thank you.
So we have enough direction then?
So, yeah, so I think that's why a dedicated evening, because this is not gonna be a 15-minute conversation. So I think a dedicated evening, we don't have to decide now, but if you can chime in in the next day or so, if the 17th works, we could try to target and make sure we can have our legal counsel in house to do that, and if not, we can look to do it, you know, at a later date.
I would, I would like to be present for it, since the majority of, many of these roads are in, in my ward. The 17th would, wouldn't work for me. I would request that it go into October, if possible.
I'll throw out an email tomorrow with dates, we'll confer with legal counsel first, after they're available, those, and we'll shoot out and try to do something at that point.
Thank you.
Any other council comments tonight? Counselor Haynes.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I know we haven't been overwhelmed with complaints, but I'm, and I know the beach season is gonna be soon, passing us, but I'm concerned with the complaints that have been logged against the beaches, and I guess my concern is, if it's enforcement, we need to address that issue come next year. I think, unfortunately, our society has accepted behavior that's not, to me, acceptable, and I think if, and I think I can speak for the council, if we want to make Laconia a clean, decent place for families, then we may have to start looking at strictly enforcing the rules and regulations of the beaches.
Anyone else?
Yes. Thank you, Counselor Haynes, I think, particularly when it comes to water quality, seeing some of the beaches shut for, for various reasons, I don't, I think we should be looking at that, and finding ways to keep these beaches open, and keeping the water quality higher to, so we can all use the water and do so comfortably. As a second issue, that was brought to my attention, that Lieutenant Paramedic Dave French is spending his last night at the Laconia Firehouse after 20 years with the Laconia Fire Department. Lieutenant French started his career as a call firefighter in the late 80s, and later went on to achieve full-time status with the town of Barnstead, and then moved to the Laconia Fire Department in 1998. So I, I just would hope my fellow councilors and the mayor would wish Lieutenant French best of luck in his retirement, and thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, and on behalf of all of us, we all wish, thank, A, thank him for his service, and wish him Godspeed. Thanks for bringing that up. Anyone else, council comments? All right, I'm gonna declare the meeting adjourned in a second, but I need to announce before that, to the council, that we're, we have a need for a brief, I'm told, brief, private meeting right after this one, so we're gonna have to clear the room for that, having to do with contract negotiations, collective bargain agreement.
Not a public session.
So in lieu of any objection, I'm going to declare the meeting adjourned at 8:37 PM. We'll wait for a minute for the room to clear, and then-